All right, are we ready to go? We'll now call the City Council regular meeting to order for October the 12th at 6:00 P.M. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be given by Councilman Jim Bernard.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for being with us tonight, dear Lord. And Father, thank you for your love. We ask you to guide us through this meeting, to give us the wisdom to make decisions that are for the better of the city, and we'll also be doing your will, dear Father. Please protect all those that are in harm's way, which are almost any place in this country right now. Keep us safe, keep us healthy, and we do this in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see this? That in person, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
There.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Here.
Mayor Andrew Anderson?
Here.
We have a form.
Garrett, I might add something to the agenda. Do I need to do it by motion, or what you got? Last year, whenever we went about the deputy mayor situation, we decided that we do that for one year.
Okay.
We were starting on our new year to that area. And I'd like to fulfill that pledge, you know, I'd like to give it up. And I would nominate Jim Bernard for that position if he's interested in serving. How we need to do it?
We'll need a motion. No one's opposed to it. Do you need a motion added to the general?
Yeah.
Do you make that?
No, just go ahead. Just to take the, uh, February 11th injunction.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for further discussion. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We have Resolution 2020 dash 01. No motion is necessary to renew an state of emergency. Moving on to item number five, we have the approval of the budget amendments.
I see our info is no longer with us, right?
Oh, there it is, okay.
You didn't want me to.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
We can, Dan.
I was just gonna ask, I don't have a copy of the revised budget because we made a lot of changes to it that night, our last budget meeting, and so were the changes that were made to the budget incorporated into the CIP?
This is the 1920 budget. This is not next year's budget yet. We have up to 60 days after the end of the year to amend the prior year budget. And our hope is to, Mark and I talked about this, our hope is to basically eliminate any departmental over budgets. During the 1819 year, we just received that report, there were seven departments that were over budget. And so this amendment is what we're trying to basically head off any over budgets for the 1920 year, which just ended. The final 2021 budget will be incorporated into one booklet, which will include the CIP, hopefully when the CIP is finally adopted as well. And then you'll get a binder or packet with both documents, you know, basically they neatly wrapped for everybody to receive.
I apologize, I was looking at number six, not at number five. So my question will come back for the number six on the agenda.
Do you have any questions for Dan on the budget amendment? Seeing none, and then a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve item number B5, approval of a budget amendment.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and seconds, or any further questions?
I just have one question in regards to the citations.
Okay.
On the cited violations, those are presented to us in an audit, or did you find these on your own?
No, they're in the audit. They're right toward the back of the book. It's, they're called findings or whatever, you know, and I don't remember on the new audit what page that is. But yeah, they're part of the examiner, the auditor's findings.
And so by doing the budget adjustment, that remedies the whole issue with the citation itself, or the violation?
Well, we're hoping that that will take care of it. I don't, again, there's a possibility one might slip through, you know, between now and the end of November. But, you know, because some of the expenses are backdated, we're still getting invoices. But I believe there's enough, enough margin to eliminate. Shouldn't have seven anyway, you might, one might slip in.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, item number six, we have the adoption of the capital improvement plan.
That'd be, bless you. The capital improvement plan actually does incorporate the changes, particularly, you'll notice, and I don't have it in front of me, the water department, we took out a pickup truck for, I believe it was 75,000, and we put in the, was it 102,000 for backhoe, I believe it was? And so that was, I think, the major change to the CIP from the proposed capital improvement plans that you've seen over the last two or three meetings. So those are incorporated with the 2021 budget changes from the meeting of the 28th are incorporated in that CIP.
Yeah. Do we have questions for Dan?
No.
No.
Seeing none, and then a motion?
A motion, we approved a capital improvement plan for fiscal year 21 through 25.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, item number seven, we have any minutes from September 28th, 2020, final budget hearing, regular council meeting. Do we have a motion?
A motion that we approve the minutes of September the 28th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or changes? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, item number eight, we have the appointment of Franklin Lark Gilfis to the planning and zoning board as an alternative.
I make a motion, we approve Ms. Franklin Lark Gilfis to the planning and zoning board as an alternative.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is, I've never met this person.
I haven't either. I spoke to her on the phone. She's just, she lives in Crystal Lake.
Okay.
And very, very happy to volunteer. She volunteers on numerous other boards, and she seems very bubbly and interested in seeing things grow and help with the city of in all parts.
Very good. All right, if there's no further questions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Item number nine, we have a request for the Battle of the Bands event. Ms. Ann Marie E. P. Please give your name and address if you will.
Yes. Ann Marie E. 234 East Camper Street, Inglewood Park, Florida.
Okay. What are your requests?
Well, what I'm asking for actually is a revisiting of the council's decision from August 17th that the Veterans Day food service be takeout only. Since then, restrictions have been lifted throughout the state. And I'm not asking for just to be sit down, but the option that the veteran would like to sit down and eat his meal, let that option be available to him. We can space out the tables. I've already instructed my volunteer staff to wear gloves and masks in the kitchen and masks outside the kitchen. We've done everything with the CDC codes. We learned it all. And we'd just like to be able to let the veterans sit down and eat a hot meal if they want to.
From a legal standpoint, Mark or Jerry, do you have any conflict then?
Well, that's up to you because it's your property. The fact that it's lifted, just, you know, it's information that is helpful to the extent that the, it shows that the governor feels like it should be more wide open. But it doesn't obfuscate you if you do anything, so I, that's still up to you. But obviously, people are starting to open up more stuff. But I would simply ask a question, is there event insurance in this?
Yes, there is.
Okay. And to cover, it's, and there's a, I assume there's a, it's kind of also a portion of the city, the city has a named insured on that.
Yes, they are. I've already turned in that paperwork.
So I, you know, less concerned, I was only following CDC guidelines and somewhere.
Yeah, I think we've gotten to the point where people are pretty self-monitoring, and if they walk in, I mean, if they have the option.
We take them, we'll have clam shells and trays, it'll completely be their option.
Mark, you have something?
Yeah, it's in our legal operation because once word gets out, do you want us to start running this out now? For others to use it, because that's what's gonna happen.
Are we renting it out?
We donated it.
It's waived, but it's really the same thing.
What's gonna happen with the money that's won't be raised?
Well, first of all, there's a, the veterans eat for free.
No, actually a $5 dollar fund.
That's for non-veterans, that goes to a high school grant for high school seniors.
So I'm like, Kim, are we renting it out now, or we donating it out to public people, or what are we doing?
Yeah, I mean, if the restrictions are lifted and they're willing to abide by the CDC regulations, and they're willing to give us those additionally insured, I don't have a problem with it.
So are we gonna be starting renting it out now?
Yep. Can I add one thing? Our only problem I see is the cleaning for us.
Will be cleaning up.
No, I know, but I mean, if we're starting to run it out, and it's not my decision to make, but it's, it's like my church just opened up, and as you walk out, they get the fogger and they're spraying it. I mean, we would have to do something, look at, you know, something like that.
What are we doing with cleaning, like, our restrooms and our parks and things like that?
We have Norris going around doing cleaning, obviously the best he can, but not several times, like, here at City Hall, he does it like three or four times a day, comes in, because we have people coming in and sitting.
Right.
He really does a good job there, but.
Obviously, we couldn't during the event, but after the event.
So do you have a list of people that are wanting to rent it out? Like, are they calling and wanting?
No, because they know we're not. We had some scheduled for November that they knew this was going on, and they've got their money back that they put down for it. So I'm just saying, once it gets out that someone's using it, we may get it, and I just need to know which way you want to go.
I mean, in my opinion, I would say unless, you know, we have a resurgence in the state, you know, clamps down again, then we should return back to.
Yeah, I'm okay with opening it as well. I mean, I'm going to restaurants, I'm going to malls, people are wearing masks, you know, those that work, that don't wear masks get the funny look. Not by me, but by others. But, you know, I'm okay with this, and I know that we did this one as a service because it is a veterans', you know, program. So anyone else that has an event where they're paying for it, a regular event, then, you know, I'm okay with opening those as well. If you want to do it after this one, that way we have a timeframe to start it up. But just using common sense moving forward.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else?
There's no restriction on the number of people attending a gathering, is there? If the churches are opening up, there's no restriction there?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, there's no. Just the actual roomwork.
You'll still have the drive-through, should people want that?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, the events that are open, it's up to whoever's opening, like some churches, like mine, only allow just a few in, but.
I mean, we're allowing football games already, there are people playing out there on weekends, and, you know, there's already some level of activity.
Yeah, I mean, that's outside, but like I said, we just need to know. So if we want to start opening up after Ann Marie's on the 11th, that's fine, just so we know.
And we could also, well, we could also, you know, make sure that we have some type of a rig on separating the tables and things like that.
Yeah, well, that's, that would have been a given anyway, but that's part of the CDC regulations anyway, you still have to have social distancing.
So how do you clean it? I mean, I know that you're gonna tidy up afterwards, but I mean, is there gonna be a level of disinfection?
Yes, there is.
That we have to go back and follow through?
Anytime someone sits down at a table, they get up, that table's getting wiped down, seats, tables, everything.
Yeah. I think for the event itself, you know, there's not much the city can do, but after the fact, obviously, it could be disinfected pretty thoroughly. It's just a matter of how much time is it gonna take the city staff, how much is it gonna cost, and et cetera, et cetera.
I agree with that.
And we'll kind of have to play it by ear, see, you know, because right now, we've got some people that aren't gonna do it, or they're gonna, people wear masks, we had other ones thinking it's a big conspiracy out there, and there's nothing going on, so.
Yeah.
Are you gonna encourage mask-wearing for people? I know when you sit down, it's, you know, you're not gonna take it off.
Well, it's a food event, so it's gonna be very hard, once they sit down to eat at home, wear a mask. But masks are definitely welcome, if they want to walk in and wear their mask until their food comes, that works. The staff, you know, my volunteer staff in kitchen will be wearing gloves and masks and a hairnet. Outside is gonna be wearing masks.
Generally, what they're doing is, you know, requiring that people wear a mask up to the point until eating.
Right.
But I don't think we'll go as far as California is, where they want to do it in two points.
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
Let me ask you, are you gonna have any kind of little monitoring?
The monitoring?
No?
I don't, I don't, I don't really think people are gonna go past a half hour at a table. To be honest with you, because we did not plan this as our normal, you serve us, now we serve you. There's not gonna be a live band, there's not gonna be a lot of stuff, it's gonna be just come in, thank you for your service, here's your meal, and that's it.
Okay, not on this agenda. I remember there was a parade that was, that was part of the plan, what happened?
No, no, the parade is altogether different. The parade was, is by the Highlands County Veterans Council.
Okay, that's on the November 11th day.
Yes. So it'll be the parade first, then the Veterans Day ceremonies, and then the food service. So actually, the Battle of the Bands is going last, not first.
So can I have just a question to follow up with, Brenda S., because I saw it on the tube. So anybody that shows up and you've got $5, you're gonna let them?
No, 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 no. Veterans eat for free.
Okay.
Non-veterans pay a $5 fee, that's mainly to put into our scholarship fund, because we give three scholarships to preenlisted seniors every year. And that, those monies go directly into that scholarship award.
Right, my question is, if anybody shows up and says, hey, I wanna eat?
But we are gonna cut it off, in other words, we're only putting so many chairs per table. So if we have a cutoff where all the table, chairs are full, they're gonna have to take a takeout.
All right, now, are you gonna get in early to set all the chairs and tables up?
Yes. Actually, I, that's why I spoke with Norris earlier today, I asked him if I could get in there the day before, so I could turn around and start setting everything up.
I know we typically don't allow a day before, because there's typically an event the day before, but if we don't have anything else going on.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. No, I saw Norris earlier today, and I asked him if it'd be possible if I could come in, that's a day he's working. So I asked him if he could turn around and come in, and let me get in there and just set up all the tables and, you know, do the initial stuff.
Well, it's sounding like you're the trial runner.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's got plenty of experience already, no, he'll do fine.
If the doctor wore the mask, social distancing.
Yes, please enforce that.
Oh, of course.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve item number D9, requiring the Battle of the Bands event at the community center on November 11th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes 401.
Thank you.
Thanks, Annie.
All right. Item number 10, we have the first reading of ordinance 15 dash 2020, cross-connection control.
An ordinance, the city did on Part 4, providing for purpose intent, convenience, and confidentiality. By definitions, providing for cross-connections prohibited or controlled. Providing for general requirements and procedures administration and customer responsibilities. Provide for fees, permits, provide for penalties, provide for severability provisions, provide for local construction, provide for conflicts, provide for scripters errors, provide for conclusion codes, provide for repeal of city laws in conflict, and provide an effective date.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I have questions, if you want to make a motion, you can discuss it.
That's what we're after.
Thank you. I want to make a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance 15 dash 2020, cross-connection control.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, question?
All right, so on page six of 15, in the middle, it says, I don't want to read the whole thing because it's a really long sentence, but it says, "Or the city shall discontinue service after 15 days and leave discontinued until the contaminant source is eliminated." Who's gonna go in after the fact and see about contamination, or is that gonna be something that's on the resident? Or would we do it and then charge them for that? And what are the fees for that?
Well, we don't have the fees at this point, we certainly may have to draw fees for this and other programs that we're clearly establishing. But it wouldn't be the utilities department that would do that. Now, that's obviously hard to discover, but industrial and commercial customers are required to allow a certain reasonable, you know, a premise to getting our utility service.
But this also applies to residential?
Yes.
So.
It's unlikely to have the types of connections that are going.
Okay, so I'm just gonna throw a question out there that has to do with code enforcement. If you know that there's a dwelling that is not to code, and you know that they have a water connection that's illegal, how do you know whether or not there's a backflow preventer in there? You don't, unless it's, I don't know where they tapped in.
No, they're right by the meter, that's where it's supposed to be.
But we don't know that, so what happens in that particular situation? I mean, would it apply the same way, and then you would still allow them to have water if they were to go ahead and make?
If we, you know, there's a problem, then there's a problem, and you feel like you can show it, and.
Okay, but let's just say.
It's probably an administrative warrant.
So let's say it's an illegal dwelling, and then they have water, and then we tell them, you've gotta have a backflow preventer on your water. We're basically telling them that they can remain illegal as a dwelling.
Well, they're independent of regulations, and just because you're protecting the water supply doesn't mean you tell them that they have the zoning, proper zoning, or proper construction rights or anything like that, that's not, that's not true. I mean, I can't say, well, we violate all these laws, but since you said we've only pointed out one of them.
Yeah, that's what I want to know, is like, can you, you know, are they gonna assume that they're good to go because they went ahead and taped this water?
They can't assume that.
Okay, that wants to stop them from assuming, right?
Nothing can stop them from assuming it, no.
So what would be our, our role? Yes.
Our role would be that the departments that are responsible for each one of those areas are responsible for telling them that they're wrong. So, you know, I'd say that the, since we're the plant council, or we get a building official, they would be saying, you know, this building is wrong, you can't have it here. But we can throw you out. The utilities department is gonna be saying, you know, you gotta have a backflow better if it's required, and otherwise, we're gonna disconnect your water.
So, but it does say that, on page 13, section 8, it says, "Connection enforcement. Any person who knowingly fails or refuses to obey or comply or willfully violates the provisions of its ordinance, or any lawful rule or regulation promulgated hereunder, or any lawful order the utilities department issued pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance, shall be subject to immediate disconnection of their water." So we don't have to tell them, fix it and do a backflow preventer, we're just gonna disconnect you.
No, it, one, it relates to cross-connections. Cross-connection is something you see that is right now an immediate risk. Let's say somebody has got a hose in a pool, and they leave their hose in the pool all the time, that's cross-connection, because that water can be sucked out of there, you're gonna lose pressure in the main. It can cross suck, backside, and then your water system become a source of contamination. The other one is, we've got this new ordinance down, or we've established for some reason that there's a reason to have this particular customer to have a backflow better. If they refuse to put one in, then, you know, we give them, we give notice first, and then if they refuse, then we terminate them. But, you know, we don't want a cross-connection, it's even an extra hour, once we discover them, they've gotten corrected. And if they're industrial or commercial, even more so, we'll get an injunction if necessary to, you know, force them to stop it. But turning off the water is obviously our strongest point, because you stop the flow from coming back in. But the valve for the turnoff is not approved backflow prevention device. So, you know, we still have to bring action against them to make them put in a backflow better, even if we turn off their water. Either that, or we have to disconnect it, have what's called an air gap, into the meter, and have an air gap. We have the, the course director is very knowledgeable about this area as well.
So do we have a list of businesses that may not have a backflow preventer? I mean, how do we, how do you monitor this?
That's what we was talking about, we thought we were talking about personnel.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that.
I generally keep very quiet about budgets, but, you know, I know they've got a lot of things that they've got to get done. One of them is, this program is required by law, has been required by law for quite some time. So, you know, we have to enforce it, you need people to enforce it, or in person at least, to get out there and enforce it. That's certified in this area, is capable of managing it. Yeah, we need to get it done, but we need to get this in place as well. So I assume that in the budget, based on that contention, that there's included a person that's gonna be able to do that. Same thing goes for, you know, identifying industrial wastewater as well. You know, we have that industrial wastewater ordinance, nothing's gonna happen with it unless somebody goes out and identifies what's industrial, what's not, out your system as it is right now, because you have, you know, a good deal of nickel coming in your system from somewhere that doesn't just accidentally flow in your system. So these things up, all need to be tracked down. But you need personnel to do that, and try and get you to that point.
Typically, I'm sorry, typically, you're gonna have a backflow preventer right downstream of the meter. So you have the water source, you have the meter, you have the backflow preventer, and it's an easement where you can get in to repair it or check it. So you'll be able to tell without particular connection whether or not you have a backflow preventer.
So, let me just ask a question. What other type of backflow prevention a business would have, or a building would have, other than the pool situation?
Well, there's, there's a lot of reasons why. Let's say, we're dealing with solvents, because they're cleaning, cleaning metal, that would be a huge one.
That laundry.
Another one would, I used to use Photoshop, but everything now is digital, so that silver, sources of silver is gone now. But funeral homes are huge. I mean, I don't want to go into details, but it's really bad things happening in the backflow, I can tell you this.
I was just wondering, because I was, what I was thinking though was like, a regular house that used to be just a home, turned into a business, or vice versa, yeah.
And then, which case, they have to meet the business aspect of this. But even a home may be required to have it, let's say, in circumstance, and I leave this up to the people that identify this risk, which I don't do, I just play this out. But I would think, from my personal perspective, you know, the years I've been in utility businesses, you have all these lovely lakes. And I know that there's this huge temptation to throw a gas tank out of the, like, no, a propane tank, out in the lake with a hose on it, and use that for your irrigation water. Well, you know, if that irrigation water is, was piped, that piping is accidentally connected to city water, you'd be pumping from the lake into your city water, not a good thing at all. And, you know, people say, well, I would never connect it to it. It's not about the fact that it's not connected today, it's about that there's that risk associated with that possibility, and possibility is too high, the risk is too high for the possibility to exist. So that's why you have those circumstances, in my opinion, where we need a backflow better. Now, some cities and counties require it for wells, because it's an alternative water source as well. Now, it's groundwater, but it's not near as good as yours, it's not chlorinated, it's shallow well, and it's hydrogen sulfide, and things like that. You know, that, I leave that up to the city to decide on that, but that is one possibility. Pools is another alternative water source. And they don't use it in the house, which is the example I used earlier, of the fact that, you know, people, you know, because of evaporation from the sun, done in many a time by itself, you take the hose, and I set, I set mine on the edge of the pool. I don't, I don't do it in the, you know, inside. you know, inside of the water, but some people just throw the hose right in the water and it fills the pool back up. Otherwise, your pump doesn't work, right? So, well, you know, the main breaks out front, now all of a sudden you lose pressure. That is like, just like a siphon, just like somebody siphons gas out of a gas tank, you know, it's, it's a, that back siphon just pulls that water back into your system. Now, water goes back on once you fix the main, and everybody's got that water.
Got it.
So that's really that thing.
And so I know that when we have new construction and restaurants and stuff, from what I recall, everyone put in a backflow preventer then, so.
Plumbing code.
Yeah, but so that's a code already from plumbing. This is going to, what's this going to do? This is going to make sure that older businesses have this, or? Or just reemphasizing what we already have?
Plumbing code is not designed to protect your water system, it's simply to protect human beings. Your water system, you may, because of the risk associated with it, want stricter provisions. Even DEP says the provisions that they have in their code are really the minimum, bare minimum requirements. And you may want more than, more than that to protect, especially in, you know, certain circumstances. But that's why you have to have somebody who's certified in that area to be able to identify those risks and go out and say, you know, I believe this meets this risk requirement, and they need to have this type of backflow prevention.
So we don't have anyone right now that has that level of certification?
I thought somebody said they hired somebody like a year ago, his name was Rick, I'm not sure. But if not, then the person can be sent to the TRIO Center, and I used to teach seminars there for cross-connection control. And they, they certified, certification, backflow prevention managers.
So does it require a certified individual to do this?
No, but it's like, you know.
Like code enforcement?
It's wise. It's wise administration.
If the city requires it, yeah, I know, and it's code, then it'll be required to be licensed. There are licensed backflow preventer contractors that we can hire until we have somebody trained in the city to go around and be part of activities.
And just out of curiosity, I mean, how many are we talking about?
Every business, every commercial establishment, and then every, need a testable backflow preventer, and then every residential home required.
So.
Just to point out too, that, you know, there, once they're installed, there's a testing requirement annually for businesses. And according to DEP, it's a minimum of two years, but most people do annually for everything.
So what, there's no fee structure in here?
No, we have to establish that.
So would that have to be established?
But the fact that testing is done by outside, let's take for instance, my house, that's a backflow better. And if I get a nasty gram, if I, if I am told that I've done it a month before, it's required. So, you know, it's, this, you know, their system will begin to start preparing those reminders periodically to send out to people that are on their system, through the building system.
So, does the fee structure have to be in place prior to the next reading?
No.
It could be done after we work, so there's plenty of time to do a study on that, or what?
If you have to do it now, it'll be for free. But, you know, it, you know, obviously, once it gets a handle on what it costs, man, it's on it, because you have to actually, it has to be, because of user fees, they have to be, you know, within a reasonable exactitude, so you can't just simply pull, pull an number out of the air. You've got to figure out what truck time and, you know, hourly work rate and weight and overhead and things like that. All have to go into it. And I don't think anybody, since it's not been done so far, nobody really knows what it costs at this point. So we can establish that as we go, but.
If that's not, you can come up with a.
I'm sorry. Could you figure out something like that? Yes, sir. And it generally comes out to an hourly rate, so you would look at an hour, maybe hour and a half, two hours at the most for a large backflow preventer. And then if it's to a contracted company, then you could look at that rate as opposed to what you're going to figure in overhead costs for somebody who's in the city to do it. I can help that way.
So what happens, let's just say that you do the study, or you look at someone, and they don't pay, they close up the shop, and they don't pay. Or they don't pay for, what do you do with that fine? Is it compound? Does it go in a lean? What happens then? I know I'm jumping ahead, but what's the future of this?
It's code enforcement.
Okay.
But, you know, if we are able to put it through our billing of our water, then, you know, it won't be required that, or we don't have that lean like our water bills are. But I have to check that out. Otherwise, it's code enforcement and code enforcement.
You disconnect them and delete it?
Yeah, until you get enough, and then you file a lean and, and it's.
What you could do, if somebody does have a backflow preventer and temporarily shut off the water, since you've got the meter and backflow preventer easement, you install a proper backflow preventer, and that fee is charged against the customer. That way, they still get the water, but they're responsible for the fee to install a backflow preventer. I mean, that's, that's a legal question. You have to get approval of that, but it's not as if it's either or. You can install a backflow preventer and, you know, acquire that payment to be made.
Yeah, a backflow preventer, a backflow preventer that's say three-quarter inch, one inch, or two inch, what sort of a cost are you talking about?
Hundred fifty bucks, maybe two hundred.
Or five eight by three quarter.
Which one?
Or five eighths by three quarter, so, you know, the residential one, that probably around that, but it's going to be more.
Well, that's in the dual checks, however, we're not, we're not approving the dual checks for.
Most businesses are using like a one inch line?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but, you know, maybe you can come up with some.
And who sells that?
We really don't have, it's not like we can pick and choose. We just, we have to say, we have to do this because of state requirements, we have a program of doing it. Now, you can be less stringent in certain circumstances. Like I said, you may not require a pool or well. I lived in Basco County, I was, you know, shocked that I didn't have a backflow preventer because I had a well and a pool. And I called up the county utilities department, I said, "Aren't I supposed to have a backflow better?" Nah, don't worry about it. But I will tell you that three-quarters of the utilities that I've got, I'm not just gesticulating here, you know, if you require it, you know, at least on wells.
So are backflow preventers like light bulbs, where it's just a universal unit that you can get? Or is it something that the city's going to mandate a certain brand, style, model, and whatever?
That's what dictated it here, different styles.
So.
And there are different styles, I mean, different types of backflow preventers, and also batteries manufacturers. Right now, we don't have a preferred vendors list for backflow.
Right, and what we'd probably do is go out the bid, get less, cheaper prices than customers can take advantage of. You know, and that's what generally they do. Even if we don't pay for it, they pay for it, you know, we want to try and get the best price we can, you know, using economies of scale.
Yeah, I got a question. So, so am I understanding you correctly to say that these backflow preventers will be required, unless this is passed, but every household and every business in the city?
Not every household, but every business, every business, yes.
Every business.
But households will be based on the risk, and the only thing, like I said, I leave that risk up to whoever is managing this. But I would say number one risk would be, you know, if you're using lake water for your irrigation. Number two would be well water for irrigation, and number three would be pool. Like I said, not everybody does those, you know, and we can tweak it the way you want to apply it. I don't want to, you know, create a huge storm. I testified to Hillsborough County Commission asking to come in and talk about cross-connection control for lakes and wells. And I told them I thought both of them should be done, and then I told them that, well, I'm not going to detail. But it was, they weren't all happy, they weren't all happy, the crowd was not happy with me, but.
Well, one thing that I think is that whatever we impose on our residents and businesses should be, I'm not saying that we should have the highest string of everything, but the basic, because, I mean, it's expensive for anyone to go ahead and do this, right? So this is a standard level type ordinance. This isn't Taj Mahal-ish, where we're going to be expecting more than, you know, a bigger city or a richer neighborhood.
No, I, you know, even if.
This is very basic.
We can fix that, that's, that's a problem, but I, I think you need to, I think the best thing for us is to start out loose or rather making people buy, buy backflow preventers for their pool, because they have a pool, and then say later on, well, we decided pools aren't risky enough, so it's too bad for you people that bought them, you know, nobody else has to buy them. So I prefer to start out a little looser on that. I'm just simply passing on to the utilities department. But, you know, and go stricter as you wish to, you know, to be, but just the balancing act is, you know, the liability associated with your water being contaminated because of that, because of a backflow which you're liable for, compared to, you know, the risk and, you know, political outfall of having those in.
Well, maybe you're not answering her question, so I'm seeing, I'm hearing you, but is this a top-of-the-line ordinance?
Yeah. Or? You're saying it's looser, but what I'm getting at is, you know, if we're going to go out and do a bid, let's just say for backflow preventers that are economies of scale where the business can go ahead and purchase ours, because we're going to install it, right?
I would prefer that we install.
Okay, so we're installing it at our rate. Are we going to be competitive with the private sector or cheaper because we got it cheaper in bulk? Therefore, it saves a resident that money, can, you know, will we amortize that on their water bill? You know, those types of things. I guess we can discuss those as time goes by.
You can amend those things, but we need to get something in place.
Yeah, but that being the case, is this the least impactful, basic backflow preventer ordinance that can be provided to our businesses and our residents? That's not going to be something that's like the most expensive out there. You know, you're saying that there's mix and models in here, you know, do we have Volkswagen's and Hyundai's? Or do we have Mercedes and Rolls Royce?
I think this is a pretty basic ordinance, yes. It provides a level of protection to the water system that's roomy heated.
Yeah, and there's, and there's good devices and there's cheap devices. I don't think, I don't think the economies of buying a cheap device are really, because this has been in there for a long time, and they have to replace it because it's bad. So we would not be, you know, wanting to get something that's cheap.
So one last question, and I know already you're new, but remarkably, you know, have we had any situations where the backflow preventers were the culprits or lack thereof of contaminated waters? Have we had that issue?
Well, we have had, maybe it's sick from it.
Yeah, we have it.
It's impossible to identify whether it's curd or not, unless you have, they call it blast, that a bunch of people get sick from one particular thing in an area. Like up in Jacksonville, where the pool, their public pool got into their water system, and everybody got sick from the same thing.
So just as a global, very basic question, let's just say McDonald's and Burger King, or any of those types of fast food. What would be a baseline cost for a backflow preventer for that type of business?
It's going to depend upon the size of the water service. They'll probably require a reduced pressure zone backflow preventer. And those are the most reliable, except for an air gap, but I couldn't give you a cost right now on that.
Yeah, and, you know, I would be shocked if businesses like that didn't already have.
Yeah, I think they already do, but we do have some older businesses that were homes that got turned into a resident, I'm sorry, residents that got turned into a business. You know, or salons, you know, you have.
To give you an example, here, commercial customers with a double check valve assembly, an existing one, they'll be allowed to continue to use that same device until such device is required to be replaced. In which case, reduced pressure zone backflow preventer assembly will be required. So while allowing the businesses already have a backflow prevention device, that's not the best in there to continue using that to such time has to be replaced.
Yeah, I mean, I think the fees are probably going to be more intensive than anything, because if you're saying that these things have to be tested every year, you know.
And who tests them? We test them.
If we're, yeah, if we're testing them, is that going to?
That's a possibility.
It's like a fire inspection. We do fire inspections.
I, Manton County doesn't test mine. I'm required to get one tested, and there's a decal they put on the meter.
Right.
That shows that it's contested, and, you know, if it expires, like, it gets turned off.
So this will create, this will create a business in Eagle Park, probably, if we can get that.
Create a business and create a burden.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Somebody has to fund that business.
True.
So to give you an example, like, on my building, I have a fire system. That fire system has to be inspected every year. There is a backflow preventer part of that, because they don't want rust or anything that could have developed in the line, so then flow back into the city lines. You know, that inspection costs me anywhere from, you know, a hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty dollars every year. You know, it's pretty significant. And then they put a tag on it, and then whenever they do their fire inspection, they have to see that that tag is there, and if it's not, then they're going to want to make it sound there.
Who does that inspection? Is this a private business or?
A fire inspection company.
They, okay.
Yeah, there's companies that specialize in that, and now there'll probably be companies that specialize in backflow.
And first, commercial five eighths by three quarters is the smallest, smallest meter size we have in residential that have it or whatever. It seems to me I pay around thirty dollars a year for my inspection on the smaller ones.
That's probably going to be a situation where if there's a company that has, you know, two hundred customers in an area, it's obviously going to be a lot cheaper than if they have to drive all the way from the coast and come over, so.
Well, I think we need to get this resolution started, work on the fee, and I think the primary thing to start with businesses. I think we can let residents go for a while, but unless we know of a certain case that there's a serious problem, which may be code for it. But we need to really get, start as quickly as possible, mainly for merchant businesses, because like you said, there's all kinds of backflow problems. I would think a normal business would hopefully have that in place, just for their own protection too. But I think we need to get that started first, whether we hire a company to do the inspection, or whether we hire somebody, trade somebody to do it. But I think we just need to pass this. Rick will come up with a fee and different types of equipment, and then we'll get somebody to start this inspection with businesses. For the time being, we'll let residents don't have to worry about it unless there's a thicker case above.
That's pretty typical, you know, commencement of this, is, you know, you start out with most risk first in industry, then go to the businesses that you know are risky, you know, tire stores, things like that. And then go to the Hallmark card stores after that, then go to residents after all the business.
Yeah, I think so too. So, okay, I'm ready to go.
I agree. I'd just like to have the D set up and kind of a general idea of how these things are going to be inspected every year before the final motion is, is done. So, but first reading is fine with me. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sora?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Out of number eleven, first reading, ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty, wastewater main extension.
The municipal city of Eagle Park, Florida, provide for amendment of Division two, Article two, Chapter ninety-eight, by addition of section ninety-eight dash fifty-four, ninety-eight dash fifty-five, to establish procedures and fees for water main extensions and upgrades. Providing for amendment of Division three, Article three, Chapter ninety-eight, by amendment of section ninety-eight dash two eleven, and addition of sections two, ninety-eight dash two twelve, and ninety-eight dash two thirteen, to establish procedures and fees for wastewater main extensions, pumping stations, and art facilities and upgrades to existing facilities, provided for purpose and policy, provided for inclusion and code, provided for repeal from thinking codes, ordinances, and resolutions, provided for severability, provided for scripturers errors, and by effective date.
Yeah, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion in order to discuss this ordinance, so I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty wastewater main extensions.
I'll second that, please.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
So Jerry, on page two, section ninety-eight dash fifty-two, four sentences from the last sentence up, or second to the last. It says, "In addition, and as an alternative means of collecting such costs and making such connections, the city shall have a lean." So this right here forces residents to connect when there's a water or sewer line in front of their house, correct?
Yes. Now, that, that you're talking about mandatory connection.
Yeah, mandatory. Is this part of, is this?
I believe this is part of the mandatory connection policy. This is just a general connections. So ninety-eight dash fifty-two, I'm just going to go quickly. Yeah, this is part of your mandatory connection policy.
Okay, so, so let's just say we just built this water and sewer line all the way up to Newport, and here's a residence in front of it. Or a business, rather. Let me just think this out. Let's just say they have a well, and they have a, what do you call it? A subject tank, thank you. This will require them to hook into our system.
A mandatory connection policy.
Mandatory, okay. Would this only apply to businesses that are inside the city, or does it have to be businesses that are outside the city?
Well, generally speaking, this apply within the, within the city limits. But you have, if you have a, and I'm not sure that you do, a Chapter one eighty, service territory, that, because I think we opted not to do that a number of years ago, because. I think we opted not to do that a number of years ago because of Sebring in the county, but in that circumstance, I believe you could impose that, but the state law requires as well as for sewer, not for water.
Okay.
But some county, like, let's say Palm Beach County requires that they have, you can connect the water and sewer if they're available. Available is the definition, I use the words, but the, that is, it's defined in most codes and statutes to be fairly close. In other words, you're not going to require somebody that's just got a house to run two blocks up and connect to the water. You may not even require them to cross four lanes of traffic. You may require them to cross the street to a main. You're not running mains on both sides of the street anywhere, but you, these are types of things that define available. I'll go off the top of my head once your definition is here, but yeah, so it would be required in that case and same thing goes for state law for sewer.
But you say required if it's inside the city unless it's at chapter one eighty service territory?
Well, in that case, you can, I believe you can contend that they're required to connect to it. Your service territory extends your city jurisdiction outside the city limits under the authority of chapter one eighty of the statutes.
So what happens if, for example, the business is on the east side of the road and the water line or the sewer line rather is on the west side of the road? It's not on their easement. How does it apply in that situation?
It depends on your definition of availability.
I mean, it's across the street, even though it's three lanes on both. I'm looking at how.
I can't see, you know, let's say you have a thousand square foot, you know, sandwich shop. You're not going to require that they jack and bore into the road or do a push underneath six lanes of traffic, you know, median in order to get them connected to, you know, your water sewer. So I mean, if you're talking about subdivision now, you would, you know, and what some people do.
But that's only if they're in the city limits. I mean, I just can't see us giving this to county businesses. Aside from the fact that if you did it, then would they have to sign a covenant? And I don't want to do forced annexations. Aside from the fact that if we do that, then we're going to eventually have to expand our fire department.
I believe you've got eight one eight territory anyway, so I think it's, you know, it's a moot point. So in other words, you're not going to be forcing people outside the city limits to connect as it stands today.
So if I'm seeing this right, there's obviously some red letter sections in here that's, which is an addition language. The rest of it, we already have in our code, correct? So why don't you just start by giving us the down and dirty version of what the meaning of the red new portions are and then maybe we'll start there.
Okay, so if you look at A, it basically talks about the fact that we're going, the city has the authority to require what type of pipe goes in. So we're not going to let somebody connect to our system and we have the right to reject it, you know, no matter how far they are away, if they want to put a two inch pipe in along the US twenty-seven because that's a waste. It's a waste our, you know, and then, you know, proper sized pipes should go in there. That's what the requirement for the master plan is, we've been talking about. When you get the master plan, you say, well, master plan says, you know, that along here, we have unfinished portion of a pipe that's supposed to be twelve inch along here, so you need to put a twelve inch pipe in. And they say, well, I'm only putting in a, you know, a store that's going to use one tenth of that. And then, you know, there's various ways you deal with that. May extension fee, if you run the pipe, you can charge them for the cost of running the pipe and that's, you know, existing pipes that you've run now. If they run the pipe, you can get from reimbursement agreement. It may be that you don't want to run the pipe anytime near. Now, if they want to build right now, they can put the twelve inch pipe in and you can get a reimbursement agreement. That's a better option. Or you can, you know, if you're exceedingly kind, you can have them put it in and you pay them for your remaining portion and they pay only for their ten percent or whatever it is they use. It's all developed by hydraulic shares, which is basically the flow that they will require from that pipe, either water to them or sewage from them in that pipe and give them total pipe carrying capacity plus, you know, you don't include the peaking factors and things like that.
So Jerry, so what you're actually saying is that if the business want to connect, if they want to run the pipe themselves, we have the, we have, we're the deciding factor as to the size of the pipe that's going to go in.
It should have been that way for.
Okay, but that's what you're saying. That's what this red here says right here. Okay.
And then the rest of it says that, you know, that, you know, the manner in which we're going to cheat or charge or require it to install it.
Just B. That was A we were just talking about.
Right.
Okay.
My question is, this is mainly talking about water. What about sewer? We just authorized to do subdivision to be built on Ebon Park and we were going to supply water but no sewer because they said they were going to use the other option, but this.
Jim, that's in page six.
Okay. Make sure we get there.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, obviously sewer costs a lot more. And as you remember, I was, you know, much to the chagrin of New Core, I was basically standing on my chair, you know, saying, you should make somebody pay for this pipe, you know, you're putting in, whatever's not paid for by grants, obviously. That's, that's a free.
So this corrects that now?
We're correcting that now.
Gotcha.
Because I mean, that's, you know, it's not a good way to treat your, your utility, treat your utility as an ongoing business for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is basically supporting, you know, a lot of the road things in hard times. But if you don't, if we pay for these pipes, the effect is that goes into your rate base. I think that is the money that you have to earn in order to pay for bonds and things like that, which means that somebody else didn't pay for it, all your customers have to pay for it in increased rates. Somebody has to pay for that, that pipe, but you know, it's either going to take it out of the general fund, which is really unfair because in that case, people are not on your utility system paying for the pipes. But the better way is, you know, that, you know, at least your utility customers are paying for it. It's done that, but the best way of all is to pay for people that are enjoying the pipe, pay for the pipe. And that's not, you know, things from the past, that's things going forward.
Yes.
We're not going to try and charge anybody that's already connected to pipes for more money.
Greg, did you have something?
I was going to say that this actually encourages and helps grow because utilities in say large areas, large spread out areas, it's our county or Tubal County, or maybe Polk County, may have a developer who wants to put in a two hundred unit development outside of where there's a large pipe currently being available by the utility. And they may have a master plan that shows that a pipe will be sufficiently sized in five years or what the developer would come in and let's say he needs eight inch capacity. He'll put in a twelve inch, what the utility needs now, and then he'll be reimbursed as people connect to it as part of the capacity fee. So it encourages a development to go out there and build.
As Mr. Two Roger, your circumstance.
I was just thinking, yeah.
But, and I knew you were going to, you know, bring that up, but like, I just simply say, the best way that needs to be dealt with and the responsible way is you have a overlay to your lines when people come in and somebody looks at that overlay and it says, okay, this section here requires a reimbursement and so we can't let these people connect without paying the reimbursement as part of their fees, okay, either to you or to Mr. Two J's or Two Buckets.
Two J's.
All right, sorry.
Two J's is that little restaurant.
Yeah. Okay, so, you know, that's, that's the idea. In the past, it's like nobody really knew, so people were connecting, you know, and, or, you know, or so, as you said, but it does happen if you don't keep track of what areas are going to be benefited by this pipe. And you have to realistically, with a master plan, you can realistically say these areas are going to benefit from this pipe. So you can actually pinpoint who needs to pay for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions on?
I would just simply say it's one of, this is not much different than, you know, you've heard people where a city runs a pipe and they have to pay for it upfront, you know, that's, you know, tax assessments, you know. We've never done that before. That's something the city could do, but this is really, you know, is a light version of that. And we're making people pay for the cost of pipes when they run subdivisions, businesses, certainly in the industry.
And what's good about it also is if a developer pays for it and it gets reimbursed as customers hook up, it preserves your borrowing capacity.
Right. Any other questions on ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty? We have a motion in a second. We'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Out of number twelve, water and wastewater capacity report.
It's just sort of my stuff, but just, I asked for this and you all approved it last year. The Ford River Water Association put it together. It's required to be done by engineers, which they did. I think they hired outside engineers to do this and they finalized it. The, what it does is establish, and I mentioned it in our contracts with New Core that we raise in our risk for anybody that is not connected to the system. So New Core's first portions are connected, they're done. But if there's any future connections or increases in capacity requirements, you'll have to pay for that. And the same thing goes for new businesses. You know, right now, a business doesn't pay for it, but if you went from a Hallmark card store to a restaurant, then you'd have to pay the new fee, okay? But this is mostly, you know, ninety percent is for, it wouldn't affect anybody's existing, it would affect mostly new people coming in. So you have a business coming into the city that's putting in, you know, a hundred seat restaurant, you know, they would have to pay a capacity fee based on this study. You need to determine from the study what you want with regard to fees. There is a, do we, do we have Ford River Water on Zoom?
No.
Okay, I just, and I think we should have them do this rather than, rather than me at the next meeting, but you know, as soon as possible.
Unless Rick wants to do it.
But I'll just go do it. I mean, I can do it, but I'm an engineer, so I.
Yeah, I was hoping we have somebody that could, just technical questions, but you might be able to answer some of them.
They're willing to do that. I mean, they do that on a regular basis. Yeah, right now they're kind of with the hurricane, but I can contact them tomorrow. See, as soon as to me, they come in.
Sure.
They'll do it by, so they don't have to be here.
What they've done here is they've given you two options. One is use the remain useful life basis, which is going to give you a lower fee. And the other one is the replacement value basis, which is the cost of actually building a pipe today, which makes more sense to me. But, you know, the other one presumes that it's already, portions are already built and they're just paying for those portions that are not used yet. But you have to build a, since you didn't have a very good fee beforehand.
I'm sorry, what was that? We didn't have a?
No.
I thought we do have fees.
We do have fees.
But they're not very good, is what you're saying? In terms of what you're looking at on page two where it says current water capacity fees?
Right. So I urge you to review the study so you can kind of picture where you want to be in this, these fees.
Well, they're.
I drafted an ordinance based on the highest rate, not presuming you would do so, just as a whole, a number to hold the position. But it's always my recommendation that you pass the highest rate that's legally supportable and then they have that here. Because you, last time you didn't do a rate for what, ten years? It was like twelve years or something like that. And obviously the cost of building treatment plans has gone substantially in that period of time and we have not been collecting money to pay for that substantial increase in cost, so.
But it also has recommendations to increase turn-ons and turn-offs and late fees and all of that. I mean, I know we have those right now, so we do have to come from staff. I mean, or is that something that would come out of the study itself based off of the usage? I mean, you said you can't just arbitrarily make up numbers, but.
No, and there's no, it's not arbitrary.
Illegal turn-ons and all that.
Right. There, in your code, you have a list of uses for, you know, your sewage aspect. They often use the capacity fees based for water based on meter size. That's what you have now. I don't know which is best. I generally prefer using the list of uses. So, you know, a restaurant might have fifteen gallons per table per day and that sort of thing, you know, there's a list of uses, you'll see in the ordinance.
But you know, Jerry, on page nine, it talks opinion of probable costs are based on the FRWA's engineers' experience as well as other similar construction projects. Does that mean if it's an opinion of probable costs, does that mean that this actually could be something different?
Yeah, more, yeah. I remember back in, when I was in utility business, back in the old time, the seventies, the cost of petroleum would shoot and skyrocket up. And you wouldn't think it, but you know, because PBC is making petroleum products, the cost of water pipes would shoot it up equally high. Plus, Ford Department of Transportation at the same time stopped allowing open cuts of roadways and it's our requirement that you had to push or at that point, jack and bore in the streets. So, I mean, it's like the cost suddenly bam, you know, off the charts.
So our response, are we supposed to have a motion tonight in regards to the option A or the?
This is just an introduction tonight.
Okay, so we're not.
I'm not going to, I think the person who used to introduce this and engineers that worked on it and he's going to set that up for the next meeting, you know, month. I'd like to have you make a decision that night so we can pass an ordinance and get it going because it doesn't need first reading.
Would it be possible to be able, that if I wanted to call them ahead of time with other pertinent questions that?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, if you could give me their number and.
Yeah, I'll call that tomorrow and I'll relay the information to you if that's all right.
Sure.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Like I said, because of the hurricane, it may be a few weeks before they make a year or go on Zoom, but they're very complicated.
But as it stands right now, we do have capacity fees and we do have late fees and all these other fees. So there's something in place. It's not like this is something brand new that we're hitting the residents and businesses with. This is already in place.
Right.
We're just changing the fee structure.
And they can be, they can add up to be fairly significant.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, they're pretty expensive as it is right now.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Do we, I know that the liens on water, but let's see, which one is it? Is it connections that we amortize?
Yes.
This is the same thing right here. So I mean, all of these could be amortized as it is, so.
Well, I would, it's not, it's not a good plan to do that for all, I don't know many circumstances where you do that, like residential.
Well, I think we have it on, do we have it on commercial or is it just residential?
I think, did it have a?
Not sure. I think it's, I think it's just, I think it's just residential.
I mean, the, you know.
Well, you had it in commercial.
But these were all for new, well, obviously for new connections, but I mean, that was one of the lures that if you wanted to get our water, we could make it affordable.
But that was in two thousand eight.
Are you saying that that's not, I mean, I can't, I can't, I can't expect a resident that, you know, really wants our water to have to pay, you know, six thousand dollars and I don't know what the size meters they would need or something like that.
I'm not hooking up.
Huh?
I'm not hooking up with these finally run businesses.
Well, you know.
It'll take them fifty years to pay that.
That's a decision you can make. And let me just point out, you can do, you know, in worst case scenarios, you can do it in stages, you know, do a phase one, you know, now and do, you know, the lower and then do the higher in like three years or something.
Well, and that would give an incentive to those individuals that wanted to go ahead and hook up while their rates are still lower.
Now, remember what you're doing when you're paying a capacity charge is you're basically buying part of the water plant, of the water plant's ability to make water, same to wastewater plant. So if you base it on local fees with your current values of the infrastructure that's in place now, you're not going to have enough money recovered to fill new lines or start a new plant.
But these pays, I mean, I'm looking at this as mostly out of the city. I mean, because pretty much everyone in the city already has water. So I mean, they're already paying a twenty-five percent surcharge. Would we be changing that or would that twenty-five remain?
Well, the user fees don't pay for capacity. They're two different.
Okay.
Things. The capacity charges are basically paying for the infrastructure, the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, the pipes, the pumps, all the, the infrastructure that's needed to get that water to you, well, take your wastewater and treat it. The user fees pay for your operational fees.
So I know that according to these charts, the graphs that are in here, they were done in January for the first twenty days of January, they don't include what the presumed usage will be by New Core. Will it change the permitted capacity dramatically in terms of the DMRs on the way? Will it change the permitted capacity dramatically in terms of the DMRs on the wastewater and on the ERCs on the water?
We, we've got the capacity in both the water and the wastewater, for the projected, I believe it's under 15,000 gallons a day, what was the maximum? Uh, I have to go ahead and look into details of that. We've got the capacity in the water and wastewater.
But then because the ERCs are based off of the monthly usage, would the ERCs, this right here, the study is based off of the January before Nucor. So the rates that they're providing us in terms of costs of what it would be is based prior to Nucor's, so.
Remember, again, th- th- these fees are what it takes to replace, uh, the infrastructure. The user fees are different. That's the operational cost.
Right.
For your chemicals and to pay your operators and to pay for repairs of the system.
But I mean, when I'm looking at one of, anyway, go ahead, but when it looks, when I do the math on one of these, it's based off of the, uh, usage of gallons per day, that's divided.
Oh, yeah, I get.
Okay, so when there's more usage by, let's say, Nucor, then that number changes, which would change, obviously, the, the ERCs for everybody else.
I understand, that's something we're gonna have to look at in the draft.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to, uh, those folks about that. But let, let me just simply point out, there's, there's always the temptation to put a lower fee in. But as it points out, the, uh, and you're, you have, at some point, you're having to build, replace the capacity, and that's what this is for. And, uh, if you do the lower rate, and you do it based on existing costs as opposed to the costs that are actually gonna be there when you have to, uh, to build a new plant, replacement cost new. Then somehow you have to make up the difference. And the way you're gonna make, have to make up the difference, for the most part, is gonna be grants, uh, you know, uh, bonds. You know, now, if you get grants, you'll be lucky, but you're not gonna pay for everything with, with grants. You're gonna have to pay a lot of money on bonds. And so who's gonna pay for the bonds? Bonds are paid for in your rates, and so everybody pays for those. Capacity fee makes the people that are actually using the capacity pay for it. It's, makes it into a user fee so that they're, they're not, you know, somebody comes in with a Nucor or a big restaurant or something like that, they pay for the cost of that plant that they're gonna use, as opposed to all the customers paying for them to have that plant.
So will this in the end affect, anyway, the current rates of our residents and our businesses that are in our system?
If anything, it'll, it'll, it'll keep it down. Now, you're, you're gonna need to, you know, do something with your rates in the future. And, uh, I, I, you know, I think that we're looking at a, a rate study now, because your rates are a number of years old.
Yeah, they lowered a couple of times, too.
And so, I mean, and there'll be a lot of, you know, possibilities there as to what you can do. Um, but, um, you see the fairness associated with making the people that are coming in today from, you know, North Carolina or New York or whatever, coming into the city new, pay for the cost of, they're now taking up the treatment plant with their, with their capacity, rather than making all the customers pay for that. That's what this is designed to do from a rate-making standpoint.
I'm not sure how to raise my hand. Excuse, this, this is Eric Larmore with Nucor.
Yeah.
Just give, Maria, you were asking a little while ago, just to give you an idea, we're gonna use up 1.7% of your potable water capacity. And we're, we're gonna use up almost 8% of your sewer capacity. So in the whole scheme of things, at least for what we permitted, we're not taking up a whole lot of capacity either way.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for raising your hand.
I didn't, I had no idea how to do it.
Did it good, it's good.
Anything else?
So we don't make a decision today, we still have a lot of info to get, right?
Right. And just develop your questions and, and your concerns, you know, from engineers.
Yeah.
Put this together, um, and they'll be able to answer those.
So at the end of the day, when we do something with this, are we gonna have to have all of our new fees in place? The turn-offs, connections, turn-ons, um, illegal, all of that has to be done with the one motion? Or are those things gonna come in phases?
No, this is just for capacity fees. When you get ready to do it, there'll be an ordinance that'll amend your existing fees, one of these new fees.
They have that in here as other impact fee recommendations. So I mean, if that's on page four, that's not part of this.
No, I, I, I think, you know, that's something to consider, and so, I think right now, we need to concentrate on these fees.
Okay.
But you, you need to adjust all your fees, and they're gonna be working on that, but.
Okay.
That's, that's on all of us.
Yep. I'm real happy with the, on page two.
Rick, you're not going anywhere, are you? I mean, you're not like planning to move away and.
No, no, no.
I've already, I've already asked.
Just checking.
I've already asked.
Okay.
He's getting ready to pay a $6,000 impact fee, right?
Kim, go ahead. I'm just saying, the one thing I thought was important was on page two, above, uh, number five, number two wastewater impact fees, the paragraph above there about the evaluated fee for the ERC now as compared to what they recommend. And I think that's something that, uh, obviously, if that's their recommendation, we need to get some information on that, as well as something that, you know, we're gonna have to seriously look at.
It doubles.
Yeah, that's something if we have to do, we have to do it.
But it's a difference, like I said, between option A and B, of the useful life basis or the replacement value basis. And that's the difference in those two prices right there.
Yeah. That's why we need them to.
Just, just bear in mind, if you have to build a plant with the replacement cost new one, as opposed to.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when you, you may, if you feel like you were never gonna have to, you know, expand your plants, option A would be fine, but, you know, option B really allows you to grow.
Okay, moving on to the regular update from the city manager. All right. Take it away, Mark.
All righty, there's probably more, but we've been a little busy the past couple of weeks with Susan and Robert. Rick was down all week, he got into done jobs, and he was up all week, luckily back today. Um, the hardening grant for the, uh, fire station does an update. Because of COVID, they're not doing onsite visits. So we did a virtual presentation, our team and their team, last Tuesday. Um, it was like 20 minutes. Um, actually, Corbett was on and Carl and the chief helped out a lot on it. And, um, we're still in the running, they, there's some things they want. We've got till next Monday to get it to them, and the, the chief and Carl and, um, Gene with Corbett is working on that, getting everything together. So just letting you know where we are on that. No decisions have been obviously made or not, and, um, but it was a good meeting with them, and we'll get them the information that they're, they're looking for. Pretty good. Um, just a reminder, the Florida Vegas cities, if, uh, any of you haven't signed up or decided to take it, I know I signed up and I got a reminder, so I said, well, let me put this on there for October 14th from 10:00 to 3:30, and we get a break for lunch, so for your ethics training. And Kim, you're next up for your early voting dates, that was a, lay that head on there.
Before you move on, can I just ask a question? The, what's the status of our CDVG grant?
I just wrote that down.
I didn't look over there.
Kim, do you have a?
Yes, um, they were going through everything, um, a couple of months ago. They were vetting it all out and getting back with, um, some of these, um, votes that have applied to provide more information. And they said it would probably be sometime late October or in November before they would have, um, information as to who's gonna be chosen.
But I mean, they only pick like three or four at a time.
Yep, we haven't got any names back from them yet, they're still working on them.
My next question is, what about the contractors? Because I was told that there were not a lot of subcontractors that, that we have to pick, they have to pick from, we were working that.
They haven't said anything to me about that yet.
Okay.
We just signed up on the quarterly report on that, right?
Yeah. So that one's still, that one's still in process and.
Do you know how many applications they're looking at?
I'm, I was told that they're probably going to choose 10. Um, I don't know exactly how many they got, but, um, they were gonna probably choose about 10 out of that.
So if I were to do a public records request, I would get a list of all of those and those 10?
Yeah, you'd get all of the applications.
Actually, if, if you wanna look in that last, um, quarterly report, I think it had the number there. If you wanna get that, email, I'm pretty sure the number.
I'm just curious, because I mean, I get calls from people all the time.
Oh, I'm sure.
You know, they're leaking, the roof is leaking, the windows are cracked.
The, the number was in there on the amount of application I have, if you wanna find that, the Corbett Santos and then.
Yeah, and I knew what it was, but I, I don't remember now, but.
I think I know, but I'd have to be a guess.
Yeah, this will be what, nearly three years. It should be at one year. So I don't know if that's COVID-related or not, but it just seems like this is dragging out, and it's gonna postpone the next CDVG that's in our CIP. I just, you know, can you like tell them to put a rush order on it?
Yep, and get a hold of them and ask them.
Tell them Maria said.
No, I mean, it's just, what's the holdup here?
That might work.
They, they get paid very well for this, it's, it's not like, you know, they're doing it, I mean, there's.
Oh, yeah, we know, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll make it a point to check on it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Actually check on it, um.
All right, Kim, you got the.
Early voting.
Early voting.
Okay, um, early voting is going to affect our next meeting. Um, the early voting dates are October 22nd through October 31st. Um, they're actually going to need the, um, council chambers here on the 21st to set up as well. And we, that has nothing to do with it, that, that date doesn't affect us. But, um, they will need access to the council chambers as of the 21st, and it will not be available for our meeting on the 26th. So the question is, is does council want to cancel the meeting or move the meeting or reschedule it? Whatever you guys think.
Well, I think this would be a good time to look at the rest of the holiday in November.
I agree.
And just be done with it all.
That's what I was gonna say. So, um, traditionally, the end of December, we typically have that meeting all, close to Christmas. I believe, uh, during Thanksgiving, I was trying to remember what happens typically during Thanksgiving.
We usually have a meeting that Monday before the parade, but there's no parade. We usually have a meeting the day after the parade, which is at Tuesday, so.
Yeah.
There will be no parade, so I think we could have it back on that Monday.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so for the 26th, do we wanna just cancel that flat out then?
It's my anniversary, and I am all for it.
Okay.
And that'll work for us, because I think we're gonna have some.
Oh, we have CRA, too. Yeah, there's CRAs.
I mean, we can.
There as well, so.
Well, there's two grants in there.
Maybe we'll, we'll motion.
Okay, well, we need.
But I mean, it, could we have the CRA at the second meeting in November, rather, I mean, at the, the first meeting in November? If we don't do it in, in October?
No reason not to, yeah.
Then why don't we do that and just have it early in November, and then not have the second November meeting? I'll leave it up to you guys.
That's fun.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so we're moving the.
We're just gonna do consensus, or we?
I think, Jerry, so we need a motion?
Yeah.
A motion.
Okay. So we'll need a motion to cancel the October 26th meeting, move the CRA to the November 9th meeting, and then also cancel the 23rd meeting of November. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous. Who made that second, please?
I do.
All right, that concludes our.
I just have one other thing we can finish. The Boys and Girls Club is having a family fun day, um, Sunday, I'm sorry, Saturday, October the 31st, from 1:00 till 4:00. And they will have super fast cars from the Sebring International Raceway. And they're gonna step on the gas and make the noise, but they're not gonna drive them around. But they have, um, free food, life skills tips, tricks, and presentations from Advent Health, um, games. Um, they're gonna give away raffle tickets, or not raffle tickets, they're gonna give away tickets to the races. Um, it'll be free to the family and children. So for those that don't have any Halloween plans, this is a great family day. It can be at the Avon Park Rec Center parking lot, Rec Center area, and it's open for all.
That's the 31st?
31st, from 1:00 PM till 4:00 PM. And then we have trick-or-treat, trick-or-treat here in the city between 6:00 and 9:00, right? I think we decided that, so anyway, this will be a nice event for the, for the families that don't wanna go trick-or-treating, they can use, so that there will be social distancing and all that.
That's very nice.
Yeah, the director got home, and he's pretty excited about it.
Yeah.
I think he's gonna make a good, good memory. I got one more thing.
Go ahead.
One more thing.
That's it, doesn't care. Um, you've got the audit, the 2018-19, it wasn't on the agenda tonight, because we didn't get it. It wasn't finalized till, um, Friday. I think Julie sent me an email at 8:20 something to Dan and I on Thursday. Um, and Kim says it's a good idea, because we got the books Friday. Dan worked it up to 5:00 o'clock Friday and took off from Michigan in the morning. Um, but we got the books in Friday, he opened them up. But Julie with, um, Clinton Larson had sent me an email, and she said, "Usually, you present the audit to the city council, at this point, the numbers are so old, I'm not sure there would be much value in it. Maybe a summary of our reports and a finding would be beneficial." She's had to do whatever, um, council would prefer. So if you'd like her at the next meeting to go over that.
I would.
I think a summary would be great.
A summary would be great.
That's what we'll do.
Okay.
And then the last thing, we have the city manager evaluation forms that were given to us by Jerry last time. And I haven't done anything with mine, but we were supposed to.
Well, we, we need them to be added into our agenda so that we can actually vote on it. At our next meeting, if we could put that in.
Just to vote on the form itself?
Vote on the form, yeah.
Okay.
And then we'll fill them out, and at the following meeting, whenever that is.